All right, we are going to call it a order. This meeting of the DelNort Solid Waste Management Authority, this Tuesday, the 21st of May, 2024, would you please call the roll, Kira?
Commissioner Tompkins?
Here.
Commissioner Short?
I'm here.
Chair and Score.
I'm here.
Would you all please join me? The Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Begin with a period of public comment, general public comment. Any member of the public can address the Solid Waste Management Authority on any matter on or off the agenda. There'll be a lot of three minutes to make your comment.
Good afternoon. Chair and Score, Commissioners, my name is Patrick Hickey. I'm the field representative for the DelNort Solid Waste Management Authority, chapter of SEIU Local 1021. I'm here to speak on an issue that frankly should have been resolved a long time ago. Over the past number of years, throughout the pandemic, challenging summer and winter weather conditions and natural emergencies, the staff have moved DelNort Solid Waste from deep in the red to securely in the black. Along with constant costs, challenges, and staffing issues associated with managing the post-closure maintenance of Crescent City landfill, the operation has seen a steady and dramatic increase in volume as customers from areas of southern Oregon and Humboldt have chosen to do business with DelNort. All of this is in no small part due to the dedication, focus, and hard work of the staff. At the March meeting with full support of authority staff, Commissioners addressed the director's salary. Now it's time to correctly align job descriptions and salaries of all the employees who conduct the day-to-day operations of this vital seven-day-a-week community service. The reclassification discussions began in parts over four years ago. This is not a new conversation. Staff have been doing more than their official job duties for a long time. They have been patient but have been underpaid for a long, long time. What we're asking is neither unjustified nor unaffordable for this agency. What we're asking for is in line with our neighboring solid waste operations. We are concerned that the board does not seem to feel any urgency, but it just costs us our most senior gate attendant and the person who was the face of the agency. The director may appear to be the face of the agency according to the board and the director, but for the 200 drivers who come up on our scales each day, to the folks in Clamath and Gaski who come to the satellite transfer stations each week, our gate staff are the face of the agency. The less publicly visible employees are also vital to operational functionality and are unnoticed and undervalued. To us, this is very urgent. All their duties have increased without increased compensation. The minimum wage has continued to go up, but theirs has failed to keep up. As usual, the staff are the ones facing the real-world consequences of the lack of board action. Let's work together to wrap this process up, correct the misclassification of staff, and move employees to a salary commensurate with the work that they do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing no other public comment, we'll close public comment and we'll move on to our consent item. We have six items on consent, the minutes from the 23rd of April, the request for six authority-allocated dumpsters for the Chamber of Commerce in support of July 4th and July 5th, authority-allocated bin pulls for the 2024 DelNort County Fair, claim number 9820 in the amount of $8,448.91 to U.S. Bank Corp. for CalCard transactions, payment to Redwoods Leavitt Insurance, not to exceed $16,000 for our property insurance, and a budget transfer for '23-'24 in the amount of $255,648. Any public comment on anything on consent? We'll close public comment.
I move. Will you accept and adopt the consent agenda?
Motion, do I have a second?
I do have a second with a comment, and it is in relation to item 2.4, our payment to U.S. Bank for the payment of CalCard transaction fees. I would like to see this board look at changing our policies to where that fee is borne on the card users in the future. Would like to see that on the agenda. If I can get consensus on that, that would be great.
Born by the card users?
If you're going to use a card, you should pay the fee. If you're going to use cash, then you don't have to pay a fee.
This is a company card. This is for the DelNort Solid Waste Management Authority expenses.
This is not for the transaction fee. I assumed it was for the transaction fees.
No, that's listed on our bank, on our financial statement.
Right, I guess I did not reconcile the two amounts. I apologize for that. So as far as consent calendar goes, I'll retract that. I still would like to see us explore that later. But yeah, I will just further go that until the next few minutes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Kira, please pull the vote.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Short?
Yes.
Chair and Score.
Yes, all right, Director's report.
This morning, we started the installation of a new card machine that would allow us to read chips and hopefully reduce the number of signatures and so speed those transactions. It is taking us between 20 and 40 seconds per card transaction just to wait for the approval process, and with 200-plus customers a day, that does end up impacting the line. So we're hoping that the card transactions will be faster with the new machine, but it did take us a while to find a vendor that provided services that worked with our software. And so having secured a vendor took us a while to jump through the hoops, but we're in the process of installation at this point. Let's see, looking at what's happened this last month, of course, there was the Clamath River cleanup, and the DelNort Tobacco Use Prevention Program had a beach cleanup both on April 20th. Those were both successful events supported by the Solid Waste Authority. We continue to have the Rethinking Recycling Program, moving on to other things that are not elsewhere on the agenda. The landfill continues to have erosion issues, but staff are doing the best that we can to stay up on the maintenance. In August, staff will be conducting the Constituent of Concern Monitoring, which is a significantly more involved and elaborate process of collecting samples for that analysis. It's done once every five years and looks at things like pesticides and herbicides that are in the parts-per-trillion detection level. So it's a completely different set of analysis that we do every five years under the orders of the Regional Water Quality Control Board, but that is a significant effort just over the horizon. We're also working with EBA regarding their update of the five-year permit review of the Crescent City landfill. They did mention that they are looking at the previous data that was submitted, and they're not sure if there might be an additional change order necessary, but they have highlighted that there is a little bit more work than they initially anticipated. You've got the draft budget and the draft rate resolution. Those are probably the most significant items on today's agenda. CalRecycle does have a new director, Zoe Heller. She was previously the first deputy director of the Division of Circular Economy since May 2023, and she was also the head of CalRecycle's Division of Mixed Materials and Local Assistance. I've worked with her closely through the statewide commission, and I believe this is a good appointment, and I have high hopes for her in the years ahead. I did attend the Fourth Annual Illegal Dumping Conference in Oakland and made a presentation including video presentations from Dave Mason, former county code enforcement officer, and Daphne Cortese Lambert of DelNort Mission Possible, and the presentation was well received. Kira's been really active, attending gatherings focused on regional collaboration and sustainability efforts related to food. She attended the Redwood Region Rise in-person gathering on the 29th and 30th, and on May 15th, she attended the North Coast Emergency Food System Partnership down in Hoplins, looking at how we might be able to make sure that, as we're talking about food rescue and redistribution, that we're considering emergency situations because those things strike us regularly, and it's all one big system, and so we want to be resilient moving forward. So I appreciate Kira's engagement on that. I'd be happy to answer any questions, or I can move on to the financials.
Just one question, Director Ward, in regards to the upcoming work with the sampling, with the constituent of concern. Are we, do we intend to make outreach again to neighboring properties? I know that we have struggled mightily over the years to find willing partners. Is that a part of the process to make those outreaches again?
Thanks for asking. No, it is not.
Okay. Once you wasted time for something that, I mean, until the, I guess unless the Water Resource Control Board decides to come back and mandate that we have to have these other...
And I'm glad that you're highlighting that issue because we do have a new contact person at the Regional Water Quality Control Board, and what we do out at the landfill to make sure that we're toeing the line is in part based on the quality of that relationship. And so as we're doing the Constituent of Concern Monitoring and working with the EBA on the update of the landfill permit, they will be working closely with this new Regional Water Quality Control Board contact, and we hope to build that positive relationship.
Very good. All right, let's move on to financials, please.
Actually, I did have one more quick question. I think it fits in here. I'm curious, we had been having quite a bit of trouble with local people that were living around the landfill. Has that settled down a bit? Is that still an issue?
It has not really settled down. We still have security concerns at the landfill. We still try, to the extent possible, to send two people out every time anyone goes out to do work out there. There are definitely security concerns that continue each time our staff goes out there, whether that's hearing gunshots in the distance or seeing people who are making threatening gestures, the security issues are still very much present. Do you have anything to modify that, Kira, since you've been out there more recently?
No, it's just, the stuff that's been happening is continuing to happen, so it hasn't died down.
All right, thank you. Just go on to financials, please.
Moving on to financials, the balance sheet indicates our cash balance essentially, so we've got $2.265 million in the bank plus $198,000 essentially for last month's rent transfer station. Looking at the AR Aging Summary, which Kathy Brewer is up to speed on, we just have one account that has a balance of over 90 days. Looking at claims approved by director, once again, the largest expense goes to Hamburg WSG for the good services they provide at the DelNort County Transfer Station, and our two second, and our second and third largest expenses are for the credit and debit card expenses for using card transactions at the DelNort County Transfer Station, and the interfund cost plan to pay the county for their personnel auditing and IT services.
So I think that this is the conversation, I think, that Commissioner Short wanted to address, and I think we've talked about this in the past, but 20237, the costs that we, and I'm assuming that that represents basically a 3% of all transactions that has to be the, for the credit card for the county to do that.
Yep.
And I know that several years ago, we talked about what he just asked about, and that's putting that 3% cost back onto everybody that uses a card. And frankly, it's been so long, I don't know where our conversation went with that, other than I know we talked about.
Yes, and I would have to, again, go back to what, my recollection of that conversation was, as a public agency, we can only set one rate. Unlike a privately-held gas station that will often have a different rate for credit card versus cash transactions, I do not believe that we have the ability to do that, though I would be happy to check with legal counsel, but that was my recollection of the conversation.
I'm not suggesting that we have a different rate, but there would be just an extra charge for credit card transactions, which wouldn't affect our rates as a percentage, it's just an extra.
But I do believe these do represent, that's why it's not just even number, these do represent a percentage. So if a person's charge is $100, then that, we're going to, we're going to pay the auditor $3 for that transaction. If the person's charge is $200, we're going to pay the auditor $6 for that, and so it's not...
That's if we went by a percentage. We could average out the year and say, hey, it costs everybody $250 for every transaction or something.
If you use a credit card.
If you use a card. I just think that it's crazy that we're bearing $10,000 effectively.
Each month.
Each month for this, for the use of a card, and it should be borne by the, by the card user. So yeah, I would appreciate checking with county council, or not county council, or our council, and seeing if there's something that we could do to rectify that.
Excellent suggestion. I'll look into that, see what we can come up with. Thank you.
So I think that possibly what we could do is similar to what you said. We can't change the fee, but we can charge for a service. So in other words, the fee is this, but there's a charge for using this, which doesn't affect the fee schedule. It's an extra charge for doing, for making this transaction. I think we talked about that, and we just questioned whether or not that was viable or what that would do from an accounting standpoint, but I think it's worth, $10,000 a month is a lot of money that we're floating to, that we're paying for.
That's correct.
We're paying $10,000 a month for the convenience of people who want to sell coal.
And for cards specifically, because the cash customers, the customers who pay with checks, those do not have these additional fees. And so in some ways, one could argue the cash customers are being overcharged because we have to pay these fees one way or another.
Well, if you wouldn't mind, Director Ward, to look into that, and maybe we can agendize that at next month's meeting to have some discussion and...
I will need to talk to Bob Black about this, and pending his availability and conversation, but we will return to a future meeting to discuss this further.
That's right, he's gone for a pretty significant period of time.
He is, he's gone until, yeah, the first.
So whether it be next meeting or the meeting after.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Gives you some time to take a look at it.
Yeah.
All right, let's go ahead and move on.
Okay. Thank you for that suggestion. Looking at our financials, April, once again, we're starting to see the uptick of the spring and summer months, and so for instance, our fees at the DelNort County Transfer Station came in $27,700 ahead of budget for the month, which is good. So overall, our fees at the DelNort County Transfer Station are approximately $78,000 ahead of budget, and the franchise fees are approximately $16,000 ahead of budget. So currently, with two months left in this fiscal year, we are $93,858 ahead of budget, and so our finances look good. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions that are finances?
No.
All right.
Okay.
And let's go ahead and move on to, have anything for landfill or general solid waste? 7.1 are adjusting our franchise rates.
This is a follow-up to, this is the annual process. Last month, we talked about the change orders for Hambro WSG for their transfer station services and the other change order for Recology DelNort for their collection services. And this is the rate resolution that establishes those rates to be charged to the general customers as well as the rates to be charged at the Clamath and Gaski transfer stations. The Clamath-Gaski transfer stations and the DelNort County transfer stations are staffed by authority staff, and the Recology services are provided by Recology DelNort staff, and they're billed by Recology DelNort on a three-month cycle.
Okay. Any questions for Director Ward? Okay, any public comment? Close public comment, and I'm looking for a motion on Resolution 2024-01.
Move we adopt the ordinance pertaining to fees and charges for the collection and disposal of solid waste in DelNort County.
I second that.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Would you please pull the vote?
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Short?
Yes.
Chair and Score.
Yes. All right, 7.2.
This is the proposed budget for our next fiscal year of '24-'25. It's a balanced budget, balancing the income and expenses projected for the year. As part of our process, because the authority adopts a budget prior to the county's process, I do present this budget for review and comment by both the Board of Supervisors and the Crescent City Council, and if they do have any comments, they're asked to provide those in writing and then follow up with a presentation to this board. That's kind of a rare occurrence, but it is part of our process, and so I'd be happy to answer any questions about this budget. And there.
I was just noting, pretty significant jump in our pension liability didn't, I know there's a formula that that is derived from, I was just curious as to why it, is it that we're in that year that it jumped, I mean, it seems like an awful lot to jump from '82 to 111.
I am so glad you asked that very question, because that is exactly my question currently. We get those, several of these lines that appear in this budget are given to us by the county auditors department. They say, this is the amount we want you to put in that line, and then we put it in the budget, and we balance the budget accordingly. On that particular line, I have a lot of questions, specifically because this agency has funded our CalPERS liability in a significant fashion that's, because we were formed much later than the county of DelNort, those liabilities started smaller, and we were able to pay them down more aggressively. And so consequently, the line that describes the retirement is CalPERS unfunded liability, I'm concerned that they may have inadvertently applied the same formula they do to other county departments to the amount that they expected from this agency, and I don't believe that's correct, but I'm certainly willing to investigate it. So as a follow-up to this very valid request, I intend to work with our treasurer and work with the auditors department to get a better answer as to what does that number represent, and if it has been overcharged, how is this agency being made whole?
Sounds great. Thank you for looking into that.
Thank you for pointing that out, because we actually made some extra payments to address that, so, okay. Any other questions?
So there is, this is a two-step process for this board. Essentially, you give me approval to present it to the city council and board supervisors, and then I come back for final approval to this board. So consensus direction is probably adequate at this point, but you can take a vote if you'd like.
I would move that we direct staff to transmit the proposed budget to DelNort County Board and Crescent City Council.
Motion, do I have a second?
Yes.
Any public comment? Okay, Kira, would you please pull the vote?
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Short?
Yes.
Chair and Score.
Yes. All right, 7.3.
So this is a draft RFP that had, we just presented to the DelNort Solid Waste Task Force last night. It is intended to solicit a community planning meeting consultant to essentially shepherd us through between four and six community meetings to try to develop a strategy about how we're going to navigate our obligations under SB 1383. SB 1383, as you probably recall, calls for us to manage organic materials, yard debris, and food waste in a way that directs them away from landfilling, where they anaerobically decompose and generate methane, which is a more potent greenhouse gas than carbon dioxide. So there are a variety of community composting options, and there are prescriptive programs that are called for in urban areas, but it's less obvious exactly what we're supposed to do and what will make sense. And since these will be significant community investments, it's appropriate that we go through some kind of planning process of deciding which items on the menu we're going to be looking at moving forward. So that's what we're looking at here. This is currently a draft, and staff are planning on doing additional small modifications before we release this, but staff recommendation is that the board directs staff to complete edits to this RFP before releasing it and advertising its availability next week, with proposals to be presented to the board in July prior to selecting and contracting with a consultant to complete these tasks. We do have, this is a grant-funded project, and we're estimating that this work will cost in the range of about $20,000.
Ted, where do you think we are in the discussion at the legislature level about the permanent exemption for rural counties?
There was a bill that was introduced by Assemblymember Woods to do that, and I need to double-check on the status of that. Bills are rapidly moving through the legislature, and I've not heard that it's been defeated at all, so I believe it's still moving through.
And there is a ton of bills. I lost track of it too, admittedly, so I was just curious if you had heard any rumblings about...
In general, there, John Kennedy of the Rural Counties ESJPA is our legislative analyst, and he does a good job trying to build consensus.
Yes, he does.
So for instance, on that bill... So for instance, on that bill, he was very active trying to make sure that it was developed in a way that didn't offend anyone so that it would die in untimely death.
Gotcha. Okay, I was, you know, kind of bringing that up to see if there was maybe a necessity to have this consultant.
But yes, I really, but what I hear from this conversation, though, is that is still absolutely a concern of this board and something we want to pursue, and I hear that very clearly.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, we have to do public comment, but with that, I'll make a motion that we release this request proposal after edits.
Yep, I second it.
Any public comment? Just a minor correction on page five under item F. I think the date is 2024, not 2022.
Thank you. Page five, item F. Yes.
Not a big deal.
Still, got to get it right.
We're going to go back to the future or something.
We will include that in the edits. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I tell you, there's one on every board.
That's what you get when you go shopping at the thrift store. Regardless, wherever I came from. All right, no public comment? All right, so pull the vote if you would, please, Kira.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Short?
Yes.
Chair and Score.
Yes. All right, that takes us to the end of our agendized items. Anything else for the good of the order, either from our Director or staff or from the Board? Mark? Okay, they will stand adjourned until our June meeting on June 18, 2024.